I called order the city of Columbia City Council meeting on this January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm going to ask for the implication to be given by Dan Davis. And then we'll have our pledge of allegiance led by our two student representative, Aaron Pedicini and Rebecca Clark. Dan?
Lord, we pray that you will help our council members to make decisions that will benefit our community and make it a better place to live. Give them courage and faith to carry on their duties. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We're gonna make an adjustment to our printed agenda. And we're gonna move up the swearing in of our new council member, Ty Graham. Ty, you wanna come forward?
Hi, Ty Graham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Charter and ordinances of the city of Columbia.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Columbia.
That I will not be influenced by any consideration.
That I will not be influenced by any consideration.
And that accept that of merit and fitness.
Accept that of merit and fitness.
And the appointment or discharge of employees.
And the appointment or discharge of employees.
That I will not make where authorized the expenditure of public money.
That I will not make or authorize the expenditure of public money.
Otherwise, and for adequate consideration.
Otherwise, and for adequate consideration.
And efficient service to the municipal corporation.
And efficient service to the municipal corporation.
And that I will in all other respects.
And that I will in all other respects.
Faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
Faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, please take a seat. Yes, please. Yeah, we're gonna get a picture of this. I sure get them all in. Hi, we welcome you and look forward to your contribution to our city.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the opportunity.
Great, thank you. At this time, you've all received a copy of the Jan.
Point of order.
You're right, thank you. We'll have roll call.
Yengus?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
Dutilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Okay. Lest I make another mistake. We will now, we've all received the copy of the minutes of our January second, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections those minutes? Hearing none, they'll be except accepted as submitted. Next, we have readings of communications. We announced that we had a seat available on the Board of Zoning Appeals. That will end November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. We initially had had three candidates. Mr. McBain has asked to withdraw his name this evening. So we have two candidates that have applied for request to see sit on this Board of Zoning Appeals. Linda Linebaugh and Richard Fryda. Any comments? Don't wanna make a motion of any sort?
Generally, what we do is we move to put both names in denomination and then we vote. So I'm gonna move to put both names in denomination.
Second.
Motion second, put both names in denomination. Dan, you call the roll.
Okay, when I call your name, you'll state who you are voting for. Yengus?
Richard Fryda.
Souter?
Richard Fryda.
Dutilio?
Linda Linebaugh.
Liston?
Richard Pryor.
Graham?
Linda Linebaugh.
Banner?
Richard Fryda.
Four votes for Richard Fryda. He's appointed.
Thank you. Next, we have reports of commissions and board. We have the, we received a copy of the CRA negotiating committee meeting minutes of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions on those minutes? We also received a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any comments on those minutes specifically? And lastly, we received a copy of the Pro Park Recreation and Sanitary Board meeting minutes of December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any questions on that, those minutes, or any other of those minutes I mentioned? They'll be adopted as submitted. This point, we're moving to recognition of persons desiring to appear. We have Scott Karen and Kelly Williamson from the Columbia School Board.
Congratulations, Todd.
Thank you.
Welcome all of you. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Today, we come to you from the school board in reference to the CRA. We had a CRA meeting recently and had discussion of four different properties that were commercial properties. That council, part of the council members asked us to look at as a school board to see what our position would be on them. During that conversation, council, part of the council members had asked the school board, us as representatives, go back to the school board and make a recommendation to the school board to approve these particular properties. Although, in November, as you know, we had a letter that we had given to council in reference to this stating that until we had some type of an agreement in place for the housing CRA that we could work through, that the school board would not be willing to move forward with any type of commercial properties. And although the negotiations with the CRA committee that we had in reference to these properties, we feel and Mrs. Williamson feels that it was in good standings and we moved forward quite graciously with that in the negotiations. After talking to the school board, the school board is unwilling to move forward with anything until we have something that we're moving forward with in place with the current CRA for the housing. And it's our understanding after talking to our attorney today that Mr. Hudson, Attorney Hudson, has a meeting with our attorney tomorrow morning at ten a.m. to discuss those particular things. It is not the school board's position to harm any type of business or stop any business. But we also understand that we need to do something with the CRA because of the fact of what we feel as though it's costing the school district as what was presented in the school board meeting this past Tuesday night. So, moving forward, once again, the school board and the negotiations with the CRA committee and what we negotiated, we felt that it was in good faith, that it looked good, but we're not willing to move forward until we have something that we can move forward with in reference to the housing CRA to prevent the school from losing any further dollars in educating these particular children. The second thing that I'd like to address is that the letter that was addressed to the school board and to our school president at the time, from council member Liston and President Council Member Liston, and also from Council Member Dan Dutilio, was in reference to having a mediation meeting with the school board.
Thank you, not mediation, moderation.
Okay, moderation meeting with a moderator that would be chosen and agreed upon between all of us. The school board is up to doing and moving forward with that without no question whatsoever. Although, there was one point in that particular letter that we looked at and disagreed with, and that was in reference to no public comment. In that particular letter, it stated that the public in the first meeting would not be able to comment, although they could show up, but they wouldn't be able to comment at that point. The school board completely sense that. We don't agree with that whatsoever. We believe that it's the public, it's their tax dollars, that it's at work with the city and the school, and they should have a voice in what goes on. In addition to that, also in that particular letter, it stated in the second meeting that the only way that a person could address, and that would be the public could address in that meeting, would be as if they put it in writing and then it would be read in that meeting as we were continuing through those cycles. We completely disagree with that. Once again, we believe that the public, if they have a voice, and they should have a voice, it's their money, it's their dollars, that they should be able to comment at any point in time, including in a meeting such as this, or in a school board meeting, or in a meeting of such that you folks requested. So therefore, once again, the school board looked at the proposal for the CRA committee that we put together, although we're not willing to move forward until this discussion takes place with Mr. Hudson, Attorney Hudson, and our attorney, and looking forward to moving forward with our relations in reference to the CRA and hopefully reducing it or being reimbursed it for the monies that are lost within the school district itself.
Mr. Karen, I think you're misunderstood the way you're commenting on how we reference the public. In that letter, it was recommended that no public comments be permitted at this meeting, but subsequent meetings could be scheduled to accept such comments. Written public comments submitted in advance could be accepted and included in the formal record of the meeting. So it was just a recommendation, and we are not against the public.
Oh, and I'm not, and I'm not saying that you are. I'm saying that as a school board, we're saying that we want the public to attend and also be able to address all of us in reference to their concerns when it has to do with the CRA.
Okay, which just sounds like on record, you're saying that we don't want them there, and that's not, that's not our.
Well, if you read the letter specifically.
I have the letter right here.
You wanna read it again, then?
Recommended.
Just go ahead and read it.
Says, "For the sake of time, it is recommended that no public comments be permitted at the first meeting, but subsequent meetings could be scheduled to accept such comments."
By?
It's a period.
Right.
"Written public comments submitted in advance could be accepted and included in the formal record of the meeting."
So in other words, in the first meeting, it's recommended that no public comments.
Recommend, recommend.
So let me, let me jump in here, because I'm, I'm obviously the one who wrote the letter. The intent of that letter was, of that particular point was specifically in the, in the interest of time and to actually get, get some work done in that first meeting was that we would not take public comments. For that meeting, if, if the public wanted to submit comments in writing, they could. Any subsequent meetings would allow public comments with no restrictions. So I wanna make sure we're clear on that, because I, I do, you know, in hearing you read it back, I broke my first rule, which is always read back what you wrote. In, in hearing that read back, I realized that that second sentence is unclear, and I apologize for that.
It's no problem. We just, we just wanna recognize the fact that the public's gonna be there. They should be able to comment on however they feel for or against whatever position all of us are for or against. That's all.
And I think in the discussions of, of this meeting, because obviously we're gonna have to work through some things, make sure that we're all on the same page before a meeting can happen, that that's certainly something that can be discussed. I just, I wanted to, to address this kind of in general, because I, I've gotta be honest with you. I get whiplash sometimes, unfortunately, and it's not, it's not you guys. I think it's just our communications with the school get a little confusing. So I wanna kinda go over where we're at and just kinda get on the same page, because I think it's important, and I mean, I, I've, I heard Dr. Mook's, you know, the stuff he talked about last week, and I've got some, some notes on it here that we're not gonna go into tonight, but. So I just wanted, first of all, the timeline, on November seventh, you guys came to us and asked us for, you know, the Hold Harmless Agreement, right? We did shortly thereafter send, send you a response, I remember if it was, I think it was in writing, recommending a working, you know, working meeting. Because this isn't exactly the format for a real effective meeting to, to work through some of those things. You didn't respond, which is fine, because you came back on the seventh. But one of the things that bothered me, Scott, was specifically something you said that, that we wanted to have this meeting behind closed doors. And I, I, that characterization hurt me, because to me, we don't, we're not trying to hide anything from anybody. A working, a working meeting is specifically to just sit down and talk things through in, in a format that's not as formal as this. So that, that kind of hurt me in that regard. And then, you know, on December fifth, we agreed, yes, we are gonna negotiate a hold harmless agreement. I think it's a great idea. But that very same meeting, you guys left and you went out in the parking lot, and I believe it was Dr. Mook, talked to the press about how the CRA was too long. So now, all of a sudden, we're getting mixed, mixed messages. Are, are we gonna negotiate this whole harmless agreement? And then the next thing we're, next little ramp to jump over is the length of the CRA. And I, I understand you guys are concerned about the length of the CRA.
We're concerned about the length of the CRA. We've mentioned that.
No, and that's.
See, this has been going on, and I appreciate that, Dan, but this is, this has been going on since two thousand and nineteen.
Right, and we.
All of this that we've talked about in every single CRA meeting, and you've been involved in it.
Right.
And I've mentioned it in every single meeting.
Right, and, and what we've asked for consistently is give us some data that we're not seeing. Because we see the data that we see, but that's not everything that exists. We all know that. So the more you can help us to see your side of things, which is, which is the whole goal of this working grant, of, of this joint meeting, is to really sit down and hash this stuff out. So, but again, it's, it's those mixed messages, because, because we thought, okay, we get this, we get this whole harmless agreement done, and, you know, we, we, we are smooth sailing, but now we're not sure, because is this CRA thing now gonna be another hurdle we have to over? Or the length of the CRA gonna be another hurdle we have to overcome?
That was the first hurdle that we've always.
Right, but, but that's not what you presented to us on that meeting. That's the question, right? It's, you asked us for this, for the whole harmless.
Hold harmless, and that's, that's what we wanted. But then we had a letter from yourself and Mr. Liston, and it changed the whole dynamics of everything. It was always a hold harmless or.
Well, hold on, hold on, because let me, let me address that. Again, you guys left after the December fifth meeting.
Right.
And talked to the, to the press about the length of the CRA. So now, again, it's a mixed, mismatched thing. So we came back the next week, and we, I recommended a joint meeting, because I wanted to actually sit down with the entire school board and talk about what exactly you want us, what, what exactly, I don't wanna say what you want us to do, that sounds wrong. What we can work on together to actually come to some agreements and not just keep talking to the media or talking past each other, which is unfortunately a lot of what we've been doing from both sides. So that was why we recommended, or I recommended the, the joint meeting, is to say, let's sit down, let's talk about the facts, let's talk about the goals, let's talk about a timeline. And again, the whole, whole harmless agreement is completely separate from that. But it was Mark's, Mark has been working on that, and we had a great discussion about that at the CRA negotiating meeting last week. So, you know, we, I thought we were moving in the right direction. It felt like it. And I understood, I understand completely, what we asked you guys for was talk to the school board, get their opinions. It wasn't, you never made a promise that you were gonna come back and approve anything. So I wanna make, put that on the record. You, you were completely upfront about that. And I appreciate, you know, that you, you had those conversations. Then on December nineteenth, we passed that motion. December twenty-sixth, we sent the letter. Now, I do understand, it seems like we sat on that for a long time, but let me, let me explain why. One, it was the holidays. It just, it, it got shuffled to the back. And then the other thing was, we knew you really couldn't talk about till January ninth anyway. January, January ninth, but, so it wasn't a priority. I mean, if, if your meeting had been the following week, you would have had it the next day.
The concern for us was that we had the CRA meeting on the fourth of January, and I got the letter on the twenty-eighth, and I was like, I, I wanted to make sure it was clear that I couldn't speak for the board.
Right, no, no, that, and that's.
And that was what I was confused about.
Yeah, you were, you were clear about that, and, but I just wanted to, you know, it was, it was, there was no intentional, like, sitting on this thing to, to put it at a bad time or anything. It was just the question, you guys weren't meeting till the ninth. I know I, Dr. Mook made a comment about how he read about it in the paper, which I'm a little confused about the timeline there, but neither here nor there. But anyway, and then January third, you responded to us saying you couldn't make any promises, which was fine. And then you pressed some additional documentation, which again, fine. January fourth, we had that really productive CRA negotiating meeting. And then on January ninth, Dr. Mook does this whole presentation about all the evils of the CRA, and, and you know, I know he's frustrated. I know you guys are all frustrated. But what we end up with is, we've, we're having all these conversations, we're recommending this meeting, and all of the information, you know, like I said, I've got these notes here that were given to me, because I couldn't attend. All of the information in these notes would have, is exactly what we're looking for in a joint meeting. That's a.
But you have to remember that our superintendent was approaching, he was addressing our board. They had requested information, and he basically put together information.
Okay, so, all right, so there, so there's maybe just a little, okay. Yeah, no, no, that's good.
That was for, for them.
Um, okay, I'm just, it just seems like we're, we're talking past each other a lot, and, and I think my goal is to try to get us talking to each other. I think all of our goal is to try to, you know, let's talk, let's figure out what we can do, what we should do, and, and then kind of concrete steps to move forward. I, I think that's really. And the only other thing, and I think it, now that I've heard it, was a misunderstanding, was on the public comments for the, for this joint meeting, because like I said, my goal in writing that and, and planning this out was to say, look, that first meeting is gonna be a long meeting. It's just, just us sitting down and, and talking through this stuff is gonna be a long meeting. So in the interest of time, maybe we don't wanna do public comments for that one. But if the school board wants public comments, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't object to it. It was just more, we, we accept public comments constantly, and we, we really appreciate them. So for sure, I mean, if that's, if that's any kind of a sticking point, I don't think any of us would object to that. Just a couple of points, you know, obviously, we've said from day one that we don't wanna hurt the school. We are serious about that. I've told you guys from day one, give me some information, give me some data, give me something to work with. And I'll, I mean, I'll be happy to fight those fights, but.
Mr. Tilio, so we understand. This has been going on since two thousand and nineteen. We've given information to you folks. We've given numbers to you folks. We've sat down and met, well, we've sat down and met with other council members, including you, Mr. Souter, and the city manager, Mr. Willard. We've sat down and met with Mr. Noel, the mayor. We've sat down and met several different times in reference to this and expressed our frustration with this and how much it was hurting us. And all it did was go to deaf ears, saying, we're not changing it. Well, that's what happened.
It didn't, so.
So now, we're willing to work together. We certainly appreciate city council, the mayor, all of you's attention with this and trying to work with us and trying to get through this, because our job is to educate students. That's our job. And certainly, these CRA properties, and these CRA properties, we love the students who are coming in, we love educating them. There's a lot of intelligent students that are coming through there, and it's wonderful to be able to educate these particular students. But on the second hand, we can't be in a position where, when this CRA just continues to keep on building, that it's harming the school and the funding that we need in order to educate. And it's certainly, and you agree, Mr. Tilio, that it's not fair that we take taxpayers' dollars that were paid into our school district and use those dollars from those individuals, other individuals in this city, to pay to educate those students throughout there without some type of, something to protect us from this. And the whole harmless agreement, it works.
It does work.
That's what we talked about. That's why you folks all approved it. But in addition to that, we also were giving you other opportunities to look at other things, such as reducing the time of the CRA, right? Or reimbursing us in dollars every year as an average of the forty-three homes that you sent us, so we could take the average income and go through and reduce it based on the tax revenue from the previous tax before it was built. So we were looking at three different things, and that's where Mr. Hudson, Attorney Hudson, comes in along with our attorney, to work out what's gonna be best for us and best for you folks, and also what's gonna be the easiest way for us to sort through this and work through this to come to a conclusion, so that we don't have to go through this anymore, and we can work as a team together in order to build the city and to build around us of what you've already done. That's all.
I think what, you know, I think what's happened truthfully is, you know, you've given us the numbers, we've given you numbers, and the numbers are contradictory. I mean, there's no other way to say it. They're contradictory. So that's why, again, we go back to this, this idea of a joint meeting. Let's sit down, let's hash through all these numbers. Let's try to figure out what actually gives us a clear picture of what's going on. That way, we can figure out what the best path forward is. And I, I guess what I was most frustrated by, and, and, you know, Kelly, you explained it perfectly, the board asked for information. I wasn't aware of that. But you're having all these conversations, and, and again, it's kind of, kind of outdated at this point, but talk to us. I mean, we're, the, the six people sitting up here are the ones who can actually do something. I mean, you know, as, as has been pointed out, you're kind of, you guys are just kind of along for the ride in this thing. We're the ones who can do something. Bring this stuff to us. I mean, you know, we can do working meetings, we can do all sorts of different things, but it's important that we, we can look at the numbers together and even to the point of sharing them beforehand, so we can kind of dig through each other's numbers and understand them and try to, you know, make the two meet. But I, I guess my message is, talk to us. Please, you know, bring this information to us and, and let us work with you. Is that, we want to. We really sincerely all want to work with you, but we're, we're, like this, this whole thing, there's, there's been a couple of times that I've had whiplash. I, we, yeah, you brought us one thing and then you talked about another. And it, it's not a question of, you know, obviously you have a right to state your concerns, but you brought us, you know, a concrete action that we could take. And with the idea, by the way, from your letter, that if we took this action, we could even talk about a global, you know, agreement to where you wouldn't, we wouldn't have to come to the school board for this. But when I look at that in, in, in light of the, you know, length of the CRA conversation, all that, I'm wondering is, are we gonna agree to this one thing and then we're gonna have to agree to something else and then something else?
No, not at all. I mean, so it's, this is very simple, and right from the start, when the mayor suggested a hold harmless, a hold harmless would be absolutely perfect for the school.
Okay.
Period. We could end everything with a hold harmless. We can end everything if we do, reduce the term, if we wanna do that. Or we can do it by reimbursing the school for the dollars that are lost.
So you brought up three times.
We, but, I'm saying, we could end everything with a hold harmless.
So you're, so just so I understand. So what you're saying, we agree to the hold harmless, if the fifteen-year goes out, the note and no other compensation to give you, just agree to the hold.
Just basically the whole.
Easiest thing to do. Or it is, is, or you can reduce it. That's another option. We talked about this in our CRA meeting. All three options we gave, the CRA committee, all three options. So they could look at him, and the attorneys could look at him also to see which would be the easiest thing to do. The hardest thing to do is to take a dollar amount, arrive at an average, and then take off percentages and properties and all this, and arrive at a dollar amount at the end. That's the hardest part of it all. We don't want anything hard. I mean, the easiest thing is a hold harmless, so that we can move forward with all this. That's the easiest thing to do.
Okay, and, and, you know, we're working on that. So I think, I, you know, I think we'd had the hope that as we worked on that, you know, in good faith, that we could. that as we worked on that, you know, in good faith, that we could continue moving forward with CRAs. You guys have stated that's not an option, which is fine. I understand completely. It's not like you didn't warn us. But I just wanted to, I, you know, we're, you guys came back just, I really wanted to have this conversation and just understand, make, you know, kind of clear the air, make sure that we all understand where we're at and and the the biggest takeaway like for me is, just, you know, talk to us. Um, the the conversation at the school board, you know, we weren't party to it. We didn't, we had gotten a little bit of warning, so we knew that there was going to be a CRA conversation happening. But we can't go back and review that information.
We've been talking to you for four years.
But we didn't.
Four years we've been going through this.
Right, and we keep.
Have we not had this conversation for four years in CRA negotiating committees?
We keep trading information that is contradictory, and we never sit down and go through it.
We were turned down for the last four years in any type of negotiations with the city in reference to this. There was nothing true. So then why didn't they move forward?
Because we asked for data yet.
No, that is absolutely not true. We requested data. We requested data from the from the city in reference to Rita so that we could arrive at a dollar amount. And and just recently, we've got data, but it was only forty-three percent of the hundred and seventy homes.
But you understand that that's what you understand that that's the data that we could get. It's it's not like we're withholding.
And we understand that.
Right.
At the forty-three, but look how long it took. It's four years to get some.
And we were working with Rita. I mean, from the time that Mike provided us the initial information and we talked about getting that, we've been working with Rita that entire time. It's not, i- it's not like we could just send them a note of giving it, give us the aggregate information for these whatever number of addresses. It's there's a back and forth. There's what the information they can give us. There's information that we don't have access to because it's it's retiree where who doesn't pay city income tax, but does pay school income tax, for example. What, so we don't even know what they're paying. So there's there's so many, so many ins and outs to that. But we are giving you the data.
Oh, there's no question about it. You're giving us the data now, and we appreciate it as a school board. And that's why the school board is going to move forward to try to come up with something such as a hold harmless to make this work for all of us and be done with all this, so we can all just get along. And we can continue with our jobs and continue educating, and you folks can continue managing the city. That's the best case scenario at this point. So let's move forward with this and let our attorneys finish this up. That's what we need to do.
Which is, which we're perfectly happy with, but we just wanted to understand it, you know, when we when we reached this whole harmless agreement, we just want to make sure there wasn't something else coming, right? I mean, because it, you can see how we would might have felt that way.
Absolutely. And you could see how we would feel that way also.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I think we we agree on so much and there's so little that we disagree on, but we just have to fix those.
Little things to make it work.
So, um, I I guess that, let's just keep talking, but but you know, as much as possible, talk to us, you know, we're the ones who can actually do something. So we want to make sure that we're getting the information that even even if it was a, you know, this in this case was a recording, you know, some, I was able to record what Dr. Muck said, so we we had some some idea of what was talked about. But that's the kind of stuff that it's useful if you're going to have those conversations for us to hear it. Um, just so that we can, you know, we can come back and look at and go, well, we agree with this, we don't agree with this. Right, I mean, that's.
And so then we can share that. I don't know if Dr. Book, uh, shared that information with you folks, that he presented, but I'll have him, uh, email that, uh, individually, so you can look at that individually and see how he arrived at what he arrived at. And then we can go from there.
Yeah, absolutely.
You gotta understand, that was a presentation with the school board because of the school board meeting, and he was presenting it to us, and that's his job in order to do that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, actually, we were there. We voted at our previous meeting, and I was gonna, I'm trying to, I mean, I have kids in the school, right? Matter of fact, my son and your grandson are in the same class.
Right.
So we were, we're, we as a group are trying to get to that next step and get to the table and share the information. That's what we think we need to do is get down, get black and white, but the whole harmless, if that's 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 it, right, that
It's the easiest thing.
What you're saying.
Perfect.
It's easy.
Perfect.
Alright.
Scott, I appreciate, Scott Kelly, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate, you know, the the CRA negotiating committee meeting. You guys were incredibly helpful and and really, I think we've we've come a long way, so.
Let's just get through this, get done, and we'll be good. Alright, very good. Thank you all.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Kelly. The city managers report.
Thanks, Mayor.
Did you, are you leaving? Okay, I'll let you leave. Good.
Okay, uh, so I want to first talk about the, um, the electric outage that happened over the weekend. I just want to say that our crews got out there. They did a great job. Approximately six o'clock in the morning, we lost power, uh, south side of the the city. And we had guys working on out there and six hours, about six hours in those, uh, you know, the cold temperatures, and we just really appreciate them, and we appreciate the residents', um, patience, but, um, guess a tree came down on a wire and and as we were fixing it, the tree uh, ended up collapsing more of the line, so we had a little bit more work to do than what we thought initially, so. But, um, you know, it's, uh, it was a, it was, it was a big, you know, big wind that came through, and and we just appreciate, um, everybody that was out there working in those, um, you know, in that in that cold weather, so. See, uh, la- since the last meeting, that nonconforming sign that was erected on Main Street, uh, it has been taken down, and we're working with the business owners to, uh, ensure that the next sign is acceptable. So, um, should, that should happen in the next couple of weeks, I would think. Our building department, uh, did recommend that we have a registration process for contractors. We did get a little bit further on that, and Mark and I are going to continue to work with Salem. And, uh, we're going to probably match up what they're doing, but we're getting close, so we should be back in in February for that. Uh, we were working with, um, with Clemens Nelson, Mark and I were working with Clemens Nelson. We are are going to try to get a new position in the administration office. And this will essentially, um, we have a retirement coming up with, um, August Serone is retiring at the end of February. So we are going to have to act pretty quickly. Uh, we didn't know exact, it's kind of a moving target, but he let us know since the last meeting. So, uh, we are, you know, we're working our way through that, but, um, part of that, you know, we've talked about a succession plan, uh, for the administrator, administration and, um, replacing, uh, zoning inspector. So, um, tonight, we do have, uh, legislation for first reading on that. So I know we've been talking about it for about six months, so. Uh, want to thank Mark for getting that done. Uh, we have been working on the Lakefront project for several years now. Uh, we did sign that TIF agreement, uh, for the commercial, which is where Drug Mart's going in, and they have a pretty aggressive schedule, by the way. It's, they they want to, they want to open amid the late summer, so, uh, they've got, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna have to move, but they they are moving, so. Um, but we 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 were talking to Rob, and we know that the school's okay with, uh, the CRA agreement that they agreed to in the TIF. But, um, to give, kind of do some housekeeping there for the city and to give, um, uh, APL some assurance that, um, you know, CRA is going to work out there. We're, we're going to present you at the next meeting with a memorialization of what we had decided to do. What we're recommending doing out there. So, um, we're working on that. We should have it at the, uh, early February meeting. And so we can, you know, get that, uh, developed. Rob should be here next meeting, um, to answer any questions about the housing out there, but we did get to see some get to see some, um, the concepts. And I know some of you on Planning Commission have seen seen some things, but it's essentially two roads with two cul-de-sacs. And, um, he he's gonna have, he should have some renderings for you, or at least be able to answer the questions on on those basically four, four sides of those streets that are going to be out there, and, um, they'll they'll run north and south, so. So look for that, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, we've been talking about adjusting our, um, credit card policy, the, um, our bank that we use for the two credit cards that we have, they automatically increase the amounts. And we have got to, uh, catch up with that for for legislation, so we're we're in in alignment with that. And the first reading is, uh, tonight. Um, I do have an exhibit A that was just handed to me, um, says I basically walked in here, um, but it it's really just to take the credit card limit from, I think it was five thousand to like twelve thousand, so. And that's between the two cards, and it's a thirty-day average, so these are just, uh, it's, it was very hard to operate on the old system, so we're, we welcome this new system. Uh, it's, the, well, that might be, I, okay, um, I don't think so. The twelve and a half a piece, you're saying? Okay. Alright. So they've increased it. We need to catch it up, but it is in the, um, let's see here. Yeah, they were, okay, they were credit up to five thousand each, which is, uh, ten thousand, and now it's up to twenty-five thousand, so it has went up. So combined, Mike, you're right, it is twenty-five thousand. So that's what the exhibit A says. Okay, moving on, uh, let's see, we submitted, um, three, uh, quarterly reports for the 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 three FEMA projects. Uh, the the one that we've closed out, but also the other, the next two that we're working on. We did receive, uh, the three letters for the opening board, Board of Zoning Appeals, and we do, we're hearing that we may have another, uh, opening, but we'll have to come back to you because we didn't get that officially, so that may be coming down the pike here. We presented a PowerPoint via Zoom for a grant request to Hot Apartment Transportation last week. And we'll find out if, um, we made the cut or not. But, uh, basically, that is widening the road from Best Western all the way east to the, uh, bridge, clear up by the auto parts store, past auto parts store. So, um, we just know that that is, uh, when Wendy's came in, we had them do a traffic study. And we were able to create another traffic study for this. Uh, this is a, um, small cities grant request uh, for program for ODOT, and it's, uh, they've never done this before until this year, and they, um, wanted us to focus on congestion. So we thought we would focus on that area, and that's that's what we've done. So, uh, I believe there were five projects, and hopefully, we make the cut, uh, on that, and we should find out sometime in March. If we were to get it, that project would have to be done in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. So, uh, that would be July first of twenty-twenty-five. We would be able to start on that project if we were to get it, and we'd have one year to get it done. Uh, I'll be, uh, presenting the update for the city presentation, uh, for the twenty-twenty-three. Basically, the kind of a state of the city, if you will, at the Rotary on the twenty-third. Uh, they have a kind of a form of it, and I'll bring the full version to, uh, the meeting on February sixth. And then the chamber is tentatively hosted, and again, uh, at the theater, uh, February thirteenth, if you if you want to come to that. As, uh, Dan said, we did have productive, uh, CRA meeting, negotiating committee meeting on January fourth. We did have four projects. Uh, those projects were mentioned in your the minutes of the meeting. So my phone is ringing off the hook from those three or four projects. So I would recommend you giving me some type of something that I can tell them. You know, that's up to you. We can do that after I get done with my manager report or, but, um, you know, right now, it's 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 basically on on hold as far as those four offers. Uh, the street department, uh, we, uh, filled pod holes. We got our brine ready for, uh, the the season, which we usually use about fifteen hundred gallons of brine. And that makes, um, the salt more effective in certain certain times. Uh, we also picked up our Christmas trees and finished brush up. Water department, they, uh, uh, finished work orders, and they're still working on that SCU out there. Uh, which is that, uh, one of the first two tanks that were in the in the, uh, water plant. Uh, wastewater department, they did perform maintenance on sludge to watering press. And an influent pump was taken out of service due to vibration during the high flow, so we're going to have to investigate that. Park and Cemetery, we, um, continue to, uh, digitize cemetery records and, uh, taking down Joy Christmas. And we had several trees, uh, come down during the high winds in the park or cemetery and, uh, are working on getting those, uh, taken down or cut up and, you know, cleaned up. We are restoring a, um, the Mirror Lake Pavilion wood stove from the nineteen forties, and it'll be displayed in the pavilion uh, as a historical artifact, so, um, that that should be interesting. Electric department, they did set a pole for the new fix the six, uh, building that they've been working on. So, uh, we can get electric back to that, uh, unit. Uh, did we, uh, that department, um, electric department did remove the arch for the Joy Christmas. Did three, uh, new electrical services and, uh, size and ordered equipment for Drug Mart. And I believe that's all I have there.
Okay, thank you, Lance.
Do you want to talk about these real quick? Because we, I think we can reach them, a couple of conclusions fairly quickly. Um, first off is the APL's proposed Eureka Road development. Um, I believe we were going to go back to, and Kelly, I I don't mean to put you on the spot. Um, I believe we're going to go back to to Rob's hair and see if he wanted to do a whole harmless on that. So I don't think we should, we can do anything with that today. I'm going to the Tractor Supply Dollar Tree. Uh, the offer, the the plan was five years, one hundred percent, five years at fifty percent. Which averages out to five or ten years at seventy-five percent. So we were just doing that to front load a little bit for them. If they're in a hurry, and I know that they are, then I would recommend just going with the ten years at seventy-five percent. Um, Blue Ribbon Chiropractic, that that offer was ten years at fifty percent. Just go with that. Um, and if anyone wants to jump in and correct me, on the any of these, I'm I'm perfectly willing to be corrected. And the last one was uh, memory care facility at Whispering Pines. This is the tough one, because it was five years at a hundred percent and then ten years at sixty percent. So we can't do that one or even something analogous on our own. Um, the best we can do, um, un- until we work this out with the school, would be ten years at seventy-five percent. Otherwise, they would have to wait until we can work it out with the school, unless unless they wanted to go to the school and and work out some kind of agreement there too. So. Any thoughts or? I went through those quickly. I can cover them again if anyone's got questions.
Well, it is a negotiation, so if you offer, um, ten years at seventy-five percent, and they either accept it or they want to negotiate back, so.
I think if you explain to them too, that, uh, we can do that unilaterally. If they want something a little bit more than that, then it's it's going to be delayed.
And we can't make that promise either, so if it, we we can't promise that there's going to be more if they wait longer. Um, because it, you know, I I assume we'll figure out this thing with the school, but even then, we may have different ideas. Once we get to that point, we just have to, you know.
we may have different ideas once we get to that point. We just have to, you know, that's perfectly reasonable. So. I, you know, I think we just go with ten years, seventy-five percent.
For the, those two, tractor supply and the memory care.
Right.
And leave Blue Ribbon Chiropractic the way it was.
Right.
Ten years and fifty percent.
Ten years of fifty percent.
What about that storage facility?
Um, that just came in, so you have a little bit of time on that. You guys can talk about that a little bit more, I think. I would say give it a couple of weeks, maybe till our next meeting. See if we get somewhere with this one. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna prejudge that one. I haven't really looked at it, so. Um, I'd say give it a couple of weeks, see how we do with the negotiations. We get somewhere, then we can do a Sierra Negotiate Committee, otherwise. And we'll just do what we can, see what we can do. Uh, like I said, I don't wanna prejudge it, so. Okay, so I can make those offers to the, them and, and then if they accept, we can get Mark and I'll start working on it and, um, get notification out to the, to them and, and the school.
Good.
Okay.
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan. Uh, hey, um, moving the agenda, we have, you've received a copy of the Columbiana EMS department report for December of twenty-twenty-three and the mayor's court report for December twenty-twenty-three. Are there any questions on those reports? Hearing none, they'll be accepted. I just received a copy of the bill list of, uh, January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. And so if anyone wants to see that bill list and we can discuss it at the next meeting, I have it right here for you to review. Okay, we're gonna move to our old business and I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Same move.
Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash oh, dash three-two-zero-seven, second reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-three dash oh, dash three-one-five-nine, establishing wage schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees of the city of Columbian.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Do you have me call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash oh, dash three-two-zero-eight, second reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-three dash oh, dash three-one-six-zero, setting a salary and establishing position and other conditions of employment for the city manager of the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash oh, dash three-two-zero-nine, second reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-three dash oh, dash three-one-six-one, setting a salary and established composition and other conditions of employment for the chief of police of the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Do you have me call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash show, dash three-two-one-zero, second reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-three dash show, dash three-one-six-two, setting salaries and establishing positions and other conditions of employment for certain appointed personnel of the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash oh, dash three-two-one-one, second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh, dash three-one-five-eight, establishing rates of pay for part-time employees of the Firestone Pool, the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Do you have me call the roll?
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It was a foregone conclusion.
I did make the motion.
And I knew that, so I just wanna have.
And speaking of motions, uh, it's been brought to my attention before we move to new business. Uh, perhaps, um, I should make a motion to approve those recommendations for Lance to make on those three CRA projects.
Second.
I'm gonna get that motion.
Very good. Very good.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, you've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? We all know what we're voting on. Very good. Uh, do you have me call the roll?
Okay, Banner made the motion. Who made the second?
Ted.
Okay, and it was ten years, seventy-five percent on APL and tractor supply, is that correct?
APL, we took no action on.
No action, it was, uh, okay, so can you tell me exactly what the motion is?
Okay, so, um, ten years, seventy-five percent on tractor supply slash Dollar Tree.
Okay.
Ten years, seventy-five percent on the memory care facility. And ten years, fifty percent on Blue Ribbon Chiropractic. APL is pending.
Hey. Has everybody got the clarification on the motion? Do you have me call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
New business. Ordinance number twenty-four dash oh, dash three-two-one-two, first reading. An ordinance amending the credit card policy of the city of Columbiana, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions? Do you have me call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Abstain.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number twenty-four dash oh, dash three-two-one-three, first reading. An ordinance creating a new position of employment within the city of Columbiana, Ohio.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Lance discussed that motion, uh, that, that new position in his manager's report. Do you have me call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to read the following resolution as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-four dash R, dash six-three-seven, emergency. An emergency resolution to select a member of a legislative authority of a municipal corporation within Columbiana County to serve on the county nine-one-one program review commit- committee.
So moved.
Second.
I just wanna comment here. I noticed New Waterford didn't do us a solid. They voted for another guy, so. They got it wrong, but we're gonna get it right.
Do you have me call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yankis?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Good. Uh, I have no further ordinance or resolutions to present. At this time in the agenda, I would like to ask if there are any buddy out there that would like to make the comment? We voted on the board.
Yeah, we did it up front.
No comments out there? Very good. Um, was there any council comments?
I'll just mention, uh, yeah, we, we did jump ahead on the agenda. That's my fault. I'm gonna take total blame for that.
Sorry. I gotta take your care.
There's a concert at, uh, theater this weekend, I believe. I think it's the nineteenth.
It's, uh, Escape this week.
Yeah, Escape is playing at the, at the theater.
Let's also point out that there's a, uh, one of the black box plays gonna be coming up starting February first. I'm not in it. But, um, you know, the, if you've never done the black box, which is a kind of a little theater in the round, they actually took over the garage in the back of the theater. Um, it is, it is a very different experience. The play is Glengarry against Glenn Ross, so, uh, very, it's a classic, so. I'm, I'm excited to see it and I, you know, if you've never seen one in that environment, check it out. It's, it's a lot of fun. It is rated R, just everyone be aware, not, uh, not suitable for younger people.
What's the name of it?
Glengarry against Glenn Ross.
I'd just like to make a comment. Um, and Kelly sitting out there from the school board. Um, I guess what I heard, what Dan said, was that why we can't talk and communicate and we have to have television stations come and, and put it all over TV and do you think it's really good for Columbiana? Is it good for Columbiana?
No, I, I don't. I just think the first one, it's painful for you. And it was given to me, you know where I live, you know where I work. And then you like, we told you we were coming to December, and then it just, it kind of imparted it, but, so it wasn't taken well either, like the letter and the way it stated. So we absolutely wanna talk. I mean, I think you made that very clear. I mean, I, I can speak for me. I can't speak for the board either. You have to remember that. Like, they have questions and that's why they wanted to withdraw. They wanted to be in front of the whole city council, not just CRA. I mean, that's, that's the truth of that.
Well, number one, you should always respond to a letter. My daughter's a teacher at your school and if a parent puts in a letter to my daughter and says I wanna request the meeting, it's my daughter's responsibility to respond. If she doesn't respond to that letter, she would be in trouble, correct? Okay, excuse me. Excuse me. You don't get letters? You never got that letter from me? Kelly, Kelly, we all get letters. Don't, don't use that. Don't use that. You didn't respond to a letter and all of you people saw that letter. And that, and you should have responded. And the fact that we continue to have to have and watch on TV tonight, Columbiana being dealt with negatively is something that is very dis-
Rick, I, I think, I think we're in the past now, so let's just, yeah, well.
Fine, I, I won't-